All right. Welcome to the Lincoln City Council Meeting of the 2nd of April 2018. Let us all rise for Pledge Allegiance, followed by a period of silent meditation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In accordance with L.B. 898, a copy of the Opened Meetings Act is posted at the back of the chamber. The order of the business of the City Council is as follows. The clerk will call the items listed on the agenda under public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on an item should come forward after the clerk reads that item. The applicant and those in favor should speak first, then those opposed. The applicant may then make one short rebuttal. Each speaker should begin by stating name, address, and whether you are speaking in favor or in opposition to the item. Testimony is limited to five minutes per speaker. After all public hearings, the council will vote on resolutions and items under third reading. On the second and last meetings of the month, immediately prior to adjournment, anyone may speak on any issue not on the agenda for that date nor planned for future agenda. I would also like to recognize, we have a scout here from Troop 16. Welcome. All right. Will the clerk please call the first item of business?
We would request those giving testimony to please clearly state your name and address and sign in on the sign-in sheet laying on the podium. Our first item of business is our public hearing consent agenda, items 1 through 2.
Would anyone like to speak on any of these items? Next item, please.
If not, we can vote on these items. Items 1C through 2B were introduced by Shob.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Benny, second by Carl. Discussion? Please call the roll.
Cam?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Motion carried, 6 to 0.
I didn't get to vote.
Please call.
Oh, excuse me, sorry. Shob?
Yes.
Do I need to recall the entire vote again?
No, just chime in whenever you need to, Benny.
Thank you.
Motion carried, 6 to 0. That concludes our consent agenda. Next is our public hearing liquor resolutions. Liquor resolutions, please, those that are giving testimony are asked to come forward and raise their right hand for the clerk to administer the oath. After the oath, witness shall state their name and address. Also, applicants or witnesses are not required to stay for the voting session. Item 3A, application of Fresh Inc. doing business as Shea Hay for a change of location of their existing Class I-K liquor license at 210 North 14th Street to 440 South 11th Street, Suite Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth as you barely believe it to be?
I do.
Well, tell us about your application.
Um, we are transferring our application from Shea Hay.
Yeah, we need you to introduce yourself, sorry.
Oh, sorry. I'm Sean Carmichael, uh, with Shea Hay Catering. Uh, my address is 2717 Everett Street.
And I'm Starr Carmichael with Shea Hay Catering, address 601 Cottonwood.
Okay.
And, uh, what we're doing is we're transferring the liquor license from Shea Hay Catering, uh, 14th and P Street, uh, to Shea Soto, which is the old Cottonwood Building up here on 11th and K.
Okay. Uh, tell us a little bit about what you're going to be doing there, Shea Soto.
Uh, we're still going to be doing offsite caterings as a, as a Shea Hay catering company, but then we will also open it up as a, as a breakfast and lunch cafe. Uh, we hope to do some, um, some private events there. Uh, we hope to do some happy hour things, but we don't want to be a bar. We want to close down by nine, possibly on Fridays, but during the weekdays, uh, be closed before six.
Okay. Are there questions, John? So what, what effect does this have on the 14th and P location?
Uh, the 14th and P location, we're still in negotiations with W.R.K. about possibly keeping that, but there's a decent chance that that will not no longer be in existence.
Or us as a company.
So with this transfer, then essentially you will have no alcohol sales, or are you closed at 14th and P then at this?
We will, we've gotten, uh, we do have a few weddings booked there. We've gotten some SDLs for them already put in place for, for this transfer, uh, for after this transfer. Um, so our plan is to get SDLs, um, for the few weddings that we have left over at that location.
Okay. Thank you.
It's been a great venue.
It has.
I really appreciate it.
It has. It's been there for 16 years. It's, it's, it's kind of heartbreaking, but.
But you'll still have the same food opportunities and all.
Yeah, we'll still have the great food.
Yep.
Excellent. Well, we wish you success.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to testify on this item? Next item, please.
Items 3B, application of ZipLine Brewing Company doing business as ZipLine Brewing Company to expand its Class AB liquor license to include an addition of an outdoor area of the southwest side of the building measuring approximately 14.5 feet by 34 feet with the fence and awning at 5740 High Court Drive, Suite B. Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth as you barely believe it to be?
I do. My name is Marcus Powers of ZipLine Brewing Company. That's M-A-R-C-U-S-P-O-W-E-R-S, and our address is 2100 Magnum Circle here in Lincoln. Um, I'm here today, uh, with the dream of warmer weather. Uh, we're, we have an application for a patio space at our southeast location, uh, uh, in, uh, Village Gardens. And, uh, this space originally, we could not develop because Campbell's hadn't developed this space to the southwest of us, and, uh, there was a sort of dirt road that was a rear access to their operation, and, um, we weren't able to utilize the space on the side of the building for a patio at that time. Um, since then, a lot of economic synergies come together in that zone, and we've had, uh, development there, and they've paved the road, and so now we're able to complete our patio project that we originally envisioned to have as part of that space.
Okay. Questions? Thank you very much for being here.
Thanks.
Would anyone else like to testify on this item?
Mr. Chair, I'd move approval of items 3A and 3B.
Second.
Moved by John, second by Larryan. Discussion? Please call the roll.
Shob?
Yes.
Cam?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Motion carried, 6 to 0.
Thanks.
Next are our items for public hearing resolutions. Item 4A, Comprehensive Plan Amendment Number 17008, amending the 2040 Lincoln Lancaster County Comprehensive Plan by changing the future land use map, priority growth area designations, and future service limit on property generally located northwest of the intersection of 98th Street and Rockabye Road.
Do we want to do both of these at the same time?
Yes.
Yeah, I would think so.
Call the next item, too.
Approving the, um, item 4B, approving the development agreement between the city and Sunset Ridge Farms LLC for costs associated with increasing the size of sanitary sewer line being built on Rockabye Road.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, I'm Mark Hunsaker. I'm appearing on behalf of Sunset Ridge Farms LLC. Um, this is a pretty straightforward application. We are applying to move approximately 68 acres, uh, into the future service area of Lincoln in the comprehensive plan, change the growth tier designation from Tier 3 to Tier 1B, and change the land use designation from agriculture to residential. And the agreement that's also before you is an agreement that, uh, that are, that the applicant will pay to increase the size of approximately 2,100 feet of sewer line from 18 inches to 21 inches in order to accommodate this additional land within the future service area. Now, that said, it's a, it's a fairly simple, um, application in that sense, but it's taken quite a lot of engineering work on the part of Civil Design Group and a lot of review by the Public Works Department to verify that there was indeed sufficient capacity downstream to accommodate an additional 68 acres of land. Um, all that's been done, and my client has agreed to pay the cost of relatively modest cost, I might add, to add, to bring in the additional land to, uh, sewer this area. Um, it's a, it's a win-win-win for the owner of the applicant here, as well as the city in terms of the efficiency of use of the infrastructure that's being built out there. Get another 68 acres of, of, uh, sewerable, developable land that may bring into the city another, oh, 250 to 300 dwelling units, all of which increases the tax base and the taxpayers' win too. So if there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Questions for Mr. Hunsaker. Larryan.
Thanks, Mark. I, and based on what you said, I think I know the answer, but I noticed in the staff report, it said that prior to our action today, the applicant would be signing the developer agreement. When we see those forms, no one signed them, I assume, then, that the signatures are there and.
I just delivered the signed documents to Jeff.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Other questions? Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to testify on this item or these items? Next item, please.
Next item would be our public hearing ordinances, second reading and related resolutions, calling items 5A and 5B together. Comprehensive Plan Conformance Number 18006 declaring 8,955 square feet of property generally located at 22nd Street and Capitol Parkway as surplus property, as well as Change of Zone Number 18004, application of Planning Department for a change of zone from P Public Use District to B4 Lincoln Center Business District on property general, generally located at 22nd Street and Capitol Parkway.
Members of the City Council, David Landis, Urban Development Department Director, the applicant in this case. This is a request to find in conformance with the, um, uh, comprehensive plan, the surplusing of about 8,000 square feet of property right here. The city owns it, in fact, Parks owns it, and they support the surplusing of this property. Currently, the owners of the warehouse, one of the first phases in the Telegraph District, has an easement to the use of this land. When we get done, we'll ultimately make this part of the redevelopment agreement with the Telegraph District, and we'll keep an easement for the access to the Lewis Ball Fields. But right now, it's the reverse. We own it, and they have an easement. Um, it is, uh, land that we don't feel a continuing need to do, and the Speedway folks would like to make sure that they are able to maintain and, uh, keep up the property. And so our current use, um, we're willing to surrender in this case. It serves the long-term interest of ultimately the Telegraph District, a project that you'll see before you in a couple of weeks. All the rest of the property, and we own several pieces of property in the Telegraph District, are also either surplus and ready to be part of that exchange, um, or will be kept by the city. And this is the one piece that doesn't fit either of those two categories. We don't intend to keep it, and it's not surplus, which is why we're here. The accompanying piece is a change from P ownership, public ownership as it's now zoned, to B4, which is the consistent, uh, zoning that we use for private enterprise in the downtown area, and that's what these two items are. Are there questions I can answer for you?
Carl.
Yes. Um, I, you clarified my question because I'm pretty sure I've driven on that, um, piece of road that's not there. So, um, but the, I mean, there, that has already been cut through.
Yes.
And, and, but it's.
There's an access point that's used to the Lewis fields, and in fact, I think, I'm not sure how wide this is, but ultimately, it'll probably be used for access for the warehouse.
What I'm saying is that access is currently there.
Yes.
Um, and I've driven, I've driven on that access, so it's, it's, it's in place. Um, but, but you explained that currently the, it's just switching the easements.
Right.
So that, uh.
We own it. They have an easement. In the end, they'll own it and will have an easement.
Right.
Clear as mud.
Okay.
John?
Yes, Mr. Landis, thank you very much for explaining this. You used the word, something about exchange of surplus property, and I wondered what you meant by exchange.
Um, no, if I use the word exchange, that's right, we're going to part with some public land in the Telegraph District. It'll be part of the redevelopment project overall, and your authority includes the ability to transfer property as part of a redevelopment agreement. And so you'll see those pieces when you see a redevelopment agreement for that phase of the Telegraph District.
Will the city receive consideration, monetary consideration for that?
We'll all find out when the redevelopment agreement hits your desk.
Anticipated that there'd be monetary consideration.
Overall, there is an exchange of value. The, the, we're not giving property away. There may or may not be depend, and I'm, I'm not sure that I can cite language that says that this, that there's a sale here, but in the TIF project, in the public, uh, developments that they'll do, the landscaping, streetscaping, there is, we think, a reasonable and fair exchange of value. And of course, we'll open ourselves up to the cross-examination of the City Council when that happens.
We'll, we'll be looking for that monetary consideration.
We will. Okay.
Thank you. Larryan.
Thanks, Dave. Yeah, this picture is outdated because there is a drive access, as Carl mentioned, and I guess my question is, will there be any alteration to the way it's configured today, not represented in this picture, should this exchange be approved? And the reason I ask is that it's kind of an awkward area to pull into. It's not exactly clear from the roadway that that's the, pretty much the primary entrance to the, to the building where the mill is located. It's, it doesn't seem like the safest.
Right.
From a layman's perspective, uh, can you speak to safety improvements or signage improvements?
I haven't seen a specific design for this area that I can report to you.
Okay.
Um, we will transfer this at the time that we do the redevelopment agreement, and we should be able to show you all of the public lands that we have, that we're parting with, and what their plan is. And at that point, I'll be able to give you a, a, an expectation as to what will happen with the property.
Do you happen to know if the access off of, if there will be an access off of 21st, north of the building shown in the image?
I don't think it's shown, but yes, I think there's one up here that will be the, as you can see, the, the parking area is up here, and that's the dominant, um, uh, point for parking to support the, the, the building. And I don't think it's shown, but I believe the access point is about here.
Okay. Well, as, as, as you move forward, if you could report back to us on signage and plans, that would be helpful.
Will do.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to speak on this item?
Good afternoon, Kent Seacrest, representing EDO, whose principal are Ennett and Speedway Motors. Uh, this, if it shows up.
There we go. Go.
Hopefully, we'll always remember, got to remember the right buttons.
Here we go.
Hopefully, this is an exhibit in that infamous agreement you're going to see hopefully in a couple of weeks. And you are correct, when you drive it today, it's a straight shot back. We are trying to circulate, uh, I mean, the Muni Building, which is in the back, which the city will continue to own with the warehouse, along with the new building up here at 21st and N Street. And we're trying to be efficient and share parking, and there'll be city parking back there, there'll be private parking, but we want to have an efficient, uh, driveway network, and so we've started to build that. It comes off of L Street, goes north, and then can loop back into the Muni Building, but its main entrance probably is going to be the new M Street, which is a boulevard street that started to be constructed out there. And that will probably be, it lines right up to the Muni Building and says, "I'm here." So the world will know how to get, that would be my guess, would be the primary public entrance that they'll use to go back to the city's, uh, Muni Building. This is the reciprocal easement draft that will be in front of you, so part of the driveway might be on our land, part might be on your land, but at the end of the day, we agree, let's just get it shared and operated accordingly. EDO will be snowplowing and taking care of that driveway access point in the future. Uh, down here, which is what's in front of you today, is the surplus scene, and there will be an agreement where the city's restricting that for landscaping and the, the Telegraph District markers that you will be seeing in the future. So it's not radically, uh, you know, art, it's not going to be full of buildings, so it will mass and look the same, so people will still be able to circulate and see, uh, sight distance when they come in and out of that driveway in the future. And, um, there is going to be an exchange. The city's going to convey more land, but EDO's going to convey some land. We're going to give the city extra right-of-way on different streets that are in that area that are kind of narrow right now, and so the city wants some water right-of-way, so we own the abutting land, and so we are conveying a little bit of right-of-way, so in that sense, it's an exchange, but there will be a cash boot because we're buying more than we're conveying to the city. And with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Questions? Thank you, Mr. Seacrest.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak on these items? Next item, please.
I'll be calling items 5C and 5D together. Change of Zone Number 18003, application of Eli Mardock for a change of zone from R2 Res- Residential District to H3 Highway Commercial District on property generally located at 340 West Cornosker Highway, along with the conditional zoning agreement between the city and Tommy L. and Norma J. Delzma, revocable living trust to restrict the area to be rezoned for use as a parking lot for property generally located at 340 West Cornosker Highway.
Good afternoon, Chairman Christensen, members of the City Council. My name is Bill Austin. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Blake Austin Law here in Lincoln, and I'm here today representing, uh, the applicant, Eli Mardock, who is with me, who is, uh, also, uh, the representative for, uh, Hunky Dory, doing business as the Royal Grove. Uh, this is a continuation of the ongoing saga to revitalize and reopen the, uh, Royal Grove, uh, and we hopefully, we think we are on the, the last furlong of the race, uh, we hope. Um, this is a change of zone from R2 to H3 on the north half of the block of, uh, of Block 7 Midway Edition. This, uh, is the, the block upon which the Royal Grove is located, and the need for the change of zone, as you may recall, is so that we have H3 zoning abutting the building instead of R2, which, uh, precluded the, the, uh, special permit that was needed for, uh, the on-sale of liquor at the Royal Grove. Um, this has been received unanimous approval from the Planning Commission. It was a conditional approval. The condition was that, uh, we obtained the change of zone that is before you today to H3. The change of zone was conditioned upon a conditional development and zoning permit, uh, uh, agreement, uh, that the, uh, north half of the block be limited in its use to parking, which it always has been, always will be. Uh, this will etch it in stone, uh, with the development and, and conditional zoning agreement. So we think we have complied with all the requirements, and we are hopeful that you will give favorable consideration to this change of zone. If you have any questions, or Eli, if you have anything to add.
No, really.
Other questions? Carl?
Yeah, thank you. Probably a question for Mr. Mardock.
Sure.
Um, haven't heard much from neighbors, which is a good thing.
Definitely, yeah.
Okay? Uh, but a couple of things I had, had heard, and I think one was in the Planning, uh, Commission's meeting. So, um, there used to be a gate, uh, to prevent exiting onto, what street would that be? To the north?
Saunders.
Saunders? Okay.
Yeah.
So is that gate currently?
It's not there. It's, I, to my knowledge, there's a, one continuous piece of fence on the north end of the property.
Oh, okay. Okay, so you can't get onto Saunders?
No.
Okay, awesome. Okay. And then I had heard from, from one of the neighbors about noise, and they, they stated that, that, uh, ceilings and other things inside, which kept the noise or inside, had been removed, and that.
We did remove a drop ceiling, which, um, I think over 50 years of various leaks was sagging.
Yeah.
It smelled really bad. It was important for us to, um, to get that out of there. We are going to add, uh, some additional soundproofing, um, but in our checks, and I do have, uh, a decibel meter. I went outside, and we were compliant within city ordinances for, for sound levels, and I believe it's 55. Um, so I went out to the north end of the parking lot and took readings, and we were, uh, within the, uh, the, with the ordinances. I think bass frequencies sometimes can carry a little bit farther, and so that's something that, um, we're definitely sensitive to, and we want to make sure that we're good neighbors, and we'll add additional soundproofing to some of the doorways. And, uh, in the ceiling area, we're adding just some acoustical treatment, which will, which will hang up as well.
Great. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you bet.
And to give you all a reference, we're talking about, right now, everybody's talking about 60 decibel level, so it's less than conversational speech level, which is pretty good. Other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your consideration. Thanks.
Would anyone else like to speak on this item, these items? Next items, please.
Item 5E, amending the pay schedule for the employee group whose classifications are assigned to the pay range, which is prefixed by the letter A by creating the classification of water quality specialist.
Good afternoon, Council, Doug McDaniel, Human Resources. Uh, this is a new classification being introduced at the request of the department. Water quality specialist, uh, will be working, uh, with collecting, analyzing, and environmental and drinking water samples, and the compliance associated with, uh, water quality for the community. It will be assigned to a pay range of A12, which has a minimum of $56,174 to $74,923.
Cindy, then Carl.
So, um, can you tell me where it was before this?
Uh, Mr. Owen is here to answer questions. I think it was, uh, some of the duties were being, uh, assigned to some laboratory personnel, but now I believe there is probably a more concentrated effort to make this a, uh, more focused position, but I'll let Mr. Owen respond to that.
Thank you.
Uh, Steve Owen, Public Works and Utilities. Um, yeah, so this isn't a new position for us, uh, a new FTE. We've actually reorganized our area a little bit and are trying to, uh, increase the classification for one of our existing environmental lab specialist positions. Um, so in terms of, of adding FTEs, this is not about, about that.
So, I'm sorry, so it's a current FTE that you're giving a new job classification to? Is, am I understanding that correctly?
Yes, it'll be a competitive hiring, and so we actually have three of these environmental lab specialists currently. One of those positions will be upgraded to this water quality specialist, and we have an opening right now. So if one of our existing environmental lab specialists doesn't get that position, or doesn't apply for that position, there is a place for that person to go to.
I see.
Know of that.
So is, and so I didn't quite have a great, um, conceptualization. Is this adding duties or changing duties?
This would be adding duties.
Okay. Thank you.
And just following up with that, what duties would you be adding?
Well, we, the context would be, we take over 60,000 water samples a year, uh, for 90 different types of, of constituents, and we do a great job of looking at the results and making sure that our water is of proper quality, that we don't exceed, um, safe drinking water quality standards. But what we're probably not doing a rugged job of at the moment is analyzing and looking at trends with that data. Um, we're also getting a lot more customer interactions, customer phone calls about water quality data. This really comes on the heels of Flint, Michigan, and, and, and some of the information that you see, uh, in the national news. We really don't have a person that can. We really don't have a person that can respond, um, with, uh, you know, respond with, uh, the right information, good information. This person's also going to be out at people's houses, interacting with folks that have water quality issues, taking samples.
Yeah. So, um, I'm remembering back, uh, not too, too long ago, three years ago or something, when our, our water was, what, the best water in the state or something?
Mm-hmm. Best tasting.
Yeah, yeah, so I haven't heard that lately. How are we doing?
Well, we keep entering the competition, and, uh, some of our sister utilities have, have beat us.
All right.
Um, yeah, a few years ago, we went to National and, and, uh, got second place.
Okay, yeah.
So...
All right, so this person, it's on this person, the new hire, the, the Scott Frost of the Water Department here to, to come in and get us back to our prior glory.
Great analogy.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, other questions? Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to... Oh, Larian, sorry.
Can you tell us what specifically the position will be? I mean, can you describe the kind of safety measures they help, um, implement to protect the, the public and, from these individual visits to overall data analysis? What kinds of things are, are they gonna be able to prevent from happening here that happened in Flint, for instance?
Yeah, of course, Flint, Michigan was about a, a different, a change in the, the source of water that they were using. It created some issues in their distribution system, which then created some, um, problems with lead from the lead services. The lead itself is actually from the water service. So we expect shortly to have, uh, some regulations coming out from EPA that sort of addresses some of the things that happened in Flint, and what that will likely mean is additional sampling for us and testing, perhaps more interaction with customers on that particular subject. So that's just one example of what this position would be doing for us. It would be, um, handling more activity when it comes to this issue of lead. We are going to be doing more, uh, source water analysis, making sure that the water that's coming down the Platte River, uh, which recharges our well field, um, is not being impacted by any, by any source water issues. So those 60,000 analysis that I mentioned, I think will soon go to something over 60, perhaps 70, maybe 80,000 analysis. It adds up very quickly. Uh, we also perform 150 analysis every month in our distribution system, so this is the water that's, that's actually entering our customers' homes. I suspect that in the future, we're going to be increasing that sampling effort, not because we're required to by regulation, but simply because we want to have a better fix on making sure that water quality is, is sufficient.
Keep.
John?
Just to allay concerns of our viewers and citizens, you mentioned the Flint, Michigan situation where they had quite a bit of lead piping. Would you describe the situation in Lincoln, and as far as any lead pipes we have?
Yeah, I'm glad you asked that, Councilman Camp, because we, we don't have lead issues here in Lincoln. Every three years, we do an analysis, uh, we're going into homes that actually have lead service pipes, and we're, we're doing the sampling that's required as part of that program. And in all cases, since we've been doing that, 1993 was the first time we did that, in all cases, we have met the lead standard. Part of that is also copper, too, so it's a lead and copper rule, and the same case with copper. We've always have met the standard.
Thank you. Okay. Larian.
If someone wanted to get their home tested for lead or copper contamination, how would they go about accessing that service?
They'd want to contact the Lincoln Water System.
Okay.
And, uh, our number is fairly pub, fairly well-published, and, uh, we can then talk to the customer and arrange something for them.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Would anyone else like to testify on this item? Next item, please.
That concludes your public hearing portion. We can now move to the voting session. Items 4A, comprehensive plan amendment number 17008, amending the 2040 Lincoln Lancaster County Comprehensive Plan by changing the future land use map, priority growth area designations, and future service limit on property generally located northwest of the intersection of 98th Street and Rockabye Road, introduced by Larian.
So, oh, did you say Lamb or Larian? Sorry.
I'm sorry, Gaylor Baird.
Okay.
That's it?
Introduced by Gaylor Baird.
So moved.
Thank you. Second.
Introduced by Larian, seconded by Lamb.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I was shocked.
This discussion...
It's okay.
Shob?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. Item 4B, approving a development agreement between the city and Sunset Ridge Farms LLC for costs associated with increasing the size of a sanitary sewer line being built on Rockabye Road, introduced by Gaylor Baird.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Larian, seconded by Cindy. Discussion? Please call the roll.
I was just gonna say, it's nice to see this kind of cooperation between the applicant and the city, and I'm not sure I've ever heard Mark Hunsaker say this is a win-win-win, so I was very pleased, and thanks for everyone's efforts.
Okay, this is a good thing. Please call the roll.
Shob?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. Item 5A, comprehensive plan conformance number 18006, declaring 8,955 square feet of... Oh, I'll, excuse me.
I think we're, and we are done.
We are done. Now, we have just resolutions, first readings, 7A through 7D, ordinances, first reading and related resolutions, 8A through 8D. Pending list, state certens, 9A through 9C, and our pending list from 10A to 10C.
Mr. Chair, I would move for adjournment.
Second.
Moved by John, seconded by Cindy. Please call the roll.
Shob?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.